Because we do have such a fabulous crowd, but because we also do have to leave the building at some point, and we want to hear from everyone. We're gonna have to switch the time to two minutes. I apologize for that. So if we could hear from Alfredo Lee.
Alfredo.
Alfredo, they find. Alfredo Lee.
Somebody take the mic down below, please?
Yes, she needs a mic.
Thank you.
I think we should all cheer.
Dan Serrano.
What can we say here? I can only say what many of the folks in Echo here tonight, so I'm not a repeat idiot, but what I will say is that I think it's really justified that landlords not get a rent increase. Okay? I think we need to get a freeze this year if we could for the next several years. Landlords, it's about time that they share the economic burden as a city in some way. I'll tell you a little bit about my story. I live on the Grand Concourse. I've lived on the Grand Concourse for the last 38 years in a building that was at one time really grand. It continues to be grand on paper and that has a landmark for a far key. My landlord owns several buildings here. Representatives, representing several of his buildings here. My landlord has commercial spaces on the Grand Concourse that brings in quite a bit of money. I live on the first floor, and on the first floor, we have several lawyers. One, here by the state, I got one of the lawyer's red statement. This was about six, seven years ago, and at that time, that lawyer was paying over five grand per month. So my question is, I've never been really good with math, but I understand that you base your decisions on landlords saying that their net operating costs are the reason why they need to be increased. My landlord has put nothing into the building. He said nothing but skin and powder, as has many of the landlords here. So I'm wondering, how can you base your decision on that kind of math? I'm asking that you please with all due respect, freeze the rent.
Maria Resta, Madeline Mendez, and Namicia Juan.
Maria, I already told you five earlier.
Oh, great.
Two minutes. Two minutes. Hello, my name is Madeline Mendez, and I live at 85, I live at 85 Madison Avenue, two realty. I've been living in my building for 22 years. I used to work. I am a section maintenance. I became disabled 15 years ago. I have SSI, and I cannot afford to move. Right now, my apartment is like 800 because I've been living there for 22 years, and I will, it's going to go high, and Section 8 only pays a portion, which they have an apartment right now, which I'm hoping Obama puts money into Section 8 because the rent is very outrageous. And landlords are taking advantage of Section 8. They're raising the rent too high for a studio of 1,212 that my friend just moved in, and they're telling her she needs to move because her portion is 1,313, which her rent right now is 200, 1,212, which she's been living there for three years. Well, my problem is I have been having a problem with my landlord. My toilet's been coming off the floor for the last eight years, and I don't understand why he can't fix it the way he needs to fix it. I have been using a bucket to piss and do. How would you like to be pissing in a bucket in the middle of the night? I mean, like, this is ridiculous. I live on the fifth floor, and he has a problem fixing the roof. I spoke to the contractors, and I told them why it's something like, you know, the roof is caving in. He, the contractors, told me that the beams are rotten, and the landlord is too cheap to put in beams. I keep telling my landlord, what is the problem of fixing my toilet the way it needs to be fixed? Why is there a problem to fix the roof? And these are the people that want a rent freeze.
So I do, please do sign one of the forms in the back. We really do want to get information and make sure that it is investigated. You should have one of those.
Thank you.
Namicia Juan. Spanish, give us a crack. Kathleen Jones.
Woody, do the form.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Jones. I'm with the Bronx Park East Community Association. We have had to stop raising these rents. Every June, they raise the rents. Every single June. They come around, every single year, they raise the rents. They raise the rents, they raise the rents. Our salaries don't go up every year. So many people in the Bronx. The Bronx has the highest percentage of unemployed. They have the highest of low, the lowest income wage earners compared to the other four boroughs. Yet every year, the rent wants to get raised. Where are the people that are on fixed incomes, that do not get raises? Or the tenants that have low wages and haven't seen them raised in years? Where are they supposed to get this money from? Last year, over 30,000 people, 30,000 New York City families were evicted. The most coming from the Bronx. I think Councilwoman Vanessa Gibson mentioned that in Bronx Housing Court, 11,000 were evicted last year. That means one-third came from the Bronx. One-third. It is ridiculous. There's a provision for the landlords where if they have a hardship, they can open up their books, and they can prove that they're not making the money that they claim they are at these meetings, that they can get financial help. Can we get the financial help? How many more of the Bronx tenants and other New York City tenants have to be evicted? One thing we've got to do, we've got to not only organize, but we've got to start to ask our each and every one of our Assemblymen, Councilmen, Senators to show up at these meetings. They want us to vote for them. Show up every single June. June, you start demanding that each and every one of our elected officials show up every single June. They want our vote? You come and you fight for your constituents. You come and you stop your constituents from being put out on the street. How many more 30,000 constituents will put out on the street? How many more this year? Get our elected officials to show up. You want our vote? Show up. Freeze rent.
Laura Still, Bruce, Raphael Schweitzer, and Ingrid Espinat.
Buenas noches. My name is Lourdes de la Cruz, and I'm in 1505 Townsend Avenue. The name of my house owner is Sam Rosen.
Good evening. My name is Laura Still, Bruce. I live at 1505 Townsend Avenue. The name of my tenant is Sam Rosen.
For years, we've had difficulties, security, cleaning, a house owner who doesn't understand what's happening, an elevator that doesn't work, rats, cockroaches, everything. But the monster that's hurt us most as a family is the lack of heat. The lack of heat has hurt us emotionally, economically, psychologically. I came to this country, I didn't have asthma. I now have asthma. My daughter came to this country without asthma. She now has asthma. We've paid over $4,000 in electricity costs because we didn't have an electric heater for heat. We've lost neighbors. Remember a neighbor that hurts me, I want to share. When we were organizing, in the first meeting, we were in a lobby, and it was freezing, we were all dressed up, the refrigerators didn't have any tinta. She said, "邻居, I'm going because I can't breathe." What happened to her? She was freezing. The freezing was a part of it.
So I want to share with you, it hurts my soul to share this story, but we lost one of my neighbors at our first tenant meeting in the building. It was so cold in the lobby, we were freezing, we all had so much cold within us. The pens didn't have any warning. And the woman said to me, "I'm sorry, but I can't stay at the meeting because I'm so cold." What happened to her? She died. We know that the heat affects people, and she died in part because of how the heat affected her.
We paid $1,394. With these conditions, it seems unfair that we should increase the rent by a cent. I want to remind you, that the mayor promised us a rent freeze, and that's what we need.
I paid $1,394 in rent, and with these conditions, I don't think that it's just that I paid, that I can survive one cent increase in rent. And I just want to remind you guys that the mayor promised us a rent freeze, and that's what we need. I paid $1,394 in rent, and with these conditions, I don't think that it's just that I paid, that I can survive one cent increase in rent. And I just want to remind you guys that the mayor promised us a rent freeze, and that's what we need.
Good evening. My name is Ingrid Espinat. I live at 1505 Townsend Avenue.
I moved here in 2005.
I moved to 1505 in 2005, and I started to pay $1,000. $1,059, and I'm now paying $1,380.
In 2010, I had an accident because the elevator doesn't stop where it's supposed to stop. I fractured my left wrist, my left leg, and I still feel bad for it. And as long as you want, you can pay a high rate. And I still have the same problem with the elevator. We moved here in 2014, and two weeks later, I left my daughter in the elevator, and she was taken out to get out.
So for this accident, I fractured my left wrist. I fractured my knee. I'm still suffering for that knee injury. And still, all the years later, in 2014, the elevator still has problems. Just not too long ago, my daughter, I was stuck in the elevator, and we had to throw ourselves out to escape the elevator that doesn't work. And with the rent that's so high, I can't believe we're still living with these conditions.
In 2000, we lost a loved one who caused an accident because someone was grabbing her to climb the elevator because the elevator was damaged. She couldn't climb the elevator that day. She fell down the elevator, she fractured her leg. Due to this accident, she was in bad condition, and then we lost her. And so, as long as you want, we keep raising the rent. Where can we stop?
So there's another neighbor of ours that also suffered an accident because one day, the elevator wasn't working, and she had to go up the stairs, and there was a problem, something blocking the stairs, and she fell and fractured her hip. And because of that injury afterwards, she was, later on, she died.
That's why we need a rent freeze. Patty Torres. Would you like to come here?
I do enjoy speaking free after chairs. Anyhow, my name is Raphael. My name is Raphael Schweitzer. I head the Bronx Parks Community Association. We represent Alton, the Park Market North community in the Bronx. And we are talking about a rent freeze, and actually, freezing is what the tenants are right now. We are freezing. It's because landlords are not providing enough heat to the tenants or building. Case in point, MTR, we all know MTR, right? Steve Picklestein, I believe it's his company, he took over about four buildings on Oldenville Avenue between Mace and Alton Avenue this past year. Right away, when it was taken over, the heat was not as much. He got, I believe he applied for NCIs to do renovations. The stuff that was growing was low quality, you know, the framings of the door, the new sinks, everything was low quality. We had a meeting, the tenant meeting in the building with Councilman Richie Torres. It made some difference, but it's an overall reason why tenants are so angry here. Landlords are very brazen, they're very arrogant, and there are a lot of them. They're very, they're very, they're very insulting and demeaning towards our tenants. If we were dealing with nice people who would actually like with us when we asked for service for apartments, maybe we'd have a different view. But that's not the case. That wasn't the case with MTR. I actually had to lend my friend a radiator to use apartment, and he needed it all winter. Unfortunately, he used an extension cord. And as we all know, fire regulations, you cannot use an extension cord for personal heater. This happens in a lot of apartments during the winter. And that is dangerous, that is not good for fire safety. So we don't need a rent freeze. We do need a rent roll back. That's one. And number two, hold on ten seconds. At a lot of buildings in the Bronx, we need rent strikes. So I urge you, please, rent freeze now. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patty. I'm a doctor in society. I've been working in the Bronx Housing Justice for 40 years. I'm about to be two years of captain of the settlement, housing organizer. And two years ago, I began to organize in buildings of one of the biggest landlords in the Bronx, Chestnut Holdings. We own 70 buildings. Many of the buildings that came tonight are his buildings. And among so many issues that tenants have testified here tonight, there's this issue of tenants being charged for tenant installed appliances and overheat. And this is something that you should definitely consider, seriously consider, because even though tenants' rents are high, we are not taking into consideration how tenants already are paying for appliances, such as for the air conditioner, the washing machine. And they are being charged for legal fees without any court orders, for damage fees, for repainting fees, for energy fees. We never know what that means, for tenant charges, for damages, for repainting. Those are the fees that these tenants see in their monthly rent bills. And some of the tenants pay those fees. They are paying because they are afraid, or they don't know, for example, that the washing machine in their, even though that state agencies have put some regulations allowing landlords to charge these fees. They don't know that long-term tenants, for example, that they shouldn't be paying these fees until they are overcharged. You here are considering the landlord side, already considering all these expenses that the landlords are having, and the publicity costs, and plumbing, wear, interior of these buildings. But they are already being charged with fees. So why not, why not consider that? And give a reminder, please. Thank you.
Juana Sanchez. Juana Sanchez.
Juan. You're the one. Where's the mic?
All security.
Juana, she's there. They're going to have to get her to go.
Buenas, no es para. I want to say, I'm in 1505 Townsend Avenue. I live on 6F, where my mom gave me, there was a baranda of a pegger. And she fell and she broke her carotid. And from that, I moved to Rockwood Road, where I didn't want to walk anymore. I want to say, I'm going to buy a small house in 1505. I don't want to live here. We're not, like, we don't have a house anymore.
So my name is Juana. I live at 1505 Townsend, in apartment 6A. I want to say that there was...
Lassiter.
The next one?
Lassiter.
Yeah, we're going to...
Lassiter.
The baranda, the pegger.
Oh, right, right, right. Sorry. The railing was broken, and my mom fell, and damaged her knee, and wasn't able to walk after that for four years.
She died.
I'm sorry.
And I want to say, I'm going to Rockwood Road, where I didn't want to walk anymore.
My daughter died after four years and wasn't able to walk again.
And I want to say, I'm going to have to fight and struggle a lot to get anything fixed in my home. But the guy who helped me, he's a good person. Because one of them is a good person. But what I have is that he's a good person.
The person that comes to the building, this guy, he's really nice, but at the end of the day, he always raises our rents.
Okay. Thank you for that. Yeah, I want 0% and 1% for my rent.
Thank you so much, and I hope that you will freeze our rents so that we could be in a better place.
Solis. Linda Rantzen. Andrew Ann Batista.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ms. Solis. I live in the high-end section of the Bronx. I'm here today because rent stabilization laws have allowed landlords to push us out of our apartments. I moved into an apartment which supposedly had a major capital improvement in 2009. Six months later, the kitchen ceiling fell in. Right by the sink, it's still, and I've been home shooting a photo of me or my partner. The owner, Anderson and Anderson Associates, or Norwax, fixed the roof, did not fix the roof as ordered to do so by HPD Councilor. The roof also leaks into the foyer closet every time it rains. Just last October, in 2013, me and my partner were breathing in black mold for six months and had to buy a $100 air purifier. Mind you, we also pay electricity. I am asking for a rent freeze. This year, I have a $50 increase, which equals to $600 per year. That has contributed to my ability to feed myself properly and wash my clothes as I need to. At this present moment, there's a hole in the kitchen waiting to fall at any time. They refuse to fix the buzzer. Out of 96 apartments, we're the only ones that don't have a buzzer. I've taken on the housing court. After leaving housing court complaining about the leak, it was leaking. Now, I'm asking you to vote in favor of a rent freeze. The landlords should not be awarded, rewarded, a yearly increase, especially when they have never upheld their end of their warrant of liability. Family members will be displaced because of rent increases, and the landlords are pushing us out so they can deregulate your apartments. They are not up to code, we don't say to occupy, but this is how we live. As John Quinones would say, what would you do if you were in this situation or your elderly parents? Again, I ask, vote for a rent freeze.
Good evening. My name is Linda Rantzen, and I reside at 825 Morrison Avenue, Lafayette Estates. Under the current E&amp;M associate management, has been, has been my observation that the gross negligence, the concerns of the property, the personal safety of the people and team at will for that mess. The basement entrance door always open. The back gate has been always open. Drugs, security guards. I'm not sure why they're there. They let everybody in. The attitude of management is implorable. He is unreachable, and when he is in the office, he's very dismissive. However, when you call 311, he becomes professional that he shouldn't have been from the very beginning. Maintenance has been strained at best because quarters have been cut more than half, and the repairs have been delayed. I think that we all have been too kind with the worst as a representative, as landlords. I think that we need to look at the landlords as a presentation for landlords and call them as we see them, American greed landlords. It is my personal opinion that these landlords are working overtime in order to get people out, so that they can get people to come in, to pay, other people to come in and pay these absorbing rents. This behavior is unacceptable, as this will put many people out in the street. I ask you to consider a rent, a rent freeze to give us an equal opportunity to have the respect, to have a respectable quality of life. As State Horizon, as I quote in 2009, New York Post, statistically, the Bronx is the poorest of the five boroughs. We are just below, I unquote, but we are just below if we continue to raise these rents. Third world country. That's where we are.
Your name is Batista. Pablo Estefino. Marcela Pinos. Antonio Jimenez.
Pablo's coming.
Oh, thanks.
Good evening, present members of the board. My name is Pablo Estefino. I work for CASA here in the Bronx. I've met countless Bronx tenants and residents in the past year who collectively feel the burden of rents increasing on a yearly basis. This isn't speculation, it's a guarantee. But this month, you have the opportunity to reverse a tide of income inequality that defines New York City. Your duty is to remain impartial, to be an arbiter of facts, figures, numbers, data, reports. But such analysis neglects the human suffering I've had to witness since I started at CASA. I'll never forget the first building I ever attempted to organize. It was and it's still under the Alternative Enforcement Program, a program of HPD that identifies the worst 200 billionaires in the city. As of today, I checked this year, that's over 300 violations for 30 units, a salary of 11.3 violations per apartment unit. Under this program, if the landlord doesn't correct the violations within four years, I mean, four months, thousands of dollars in fines are going to be imposed by HPD. I want to highlight one particular family. They had no heat or hot water, and one of the most brutal winters of recent memory. As a single mother who had to take care of her disabled brother, raised teenagers, and most seriously, being sued by the father for child support payments, imagine the burden of trying to pay rent in a borough for $1,000. One-bedroom apartments have become the norm. To further act insult to injury, imagine heating your apartments with the oven on. It's completely dangerous. Imagine your broker's radiator leaking, causing neighbors sealing on the floor beneath you to collapse. Imagine waking up in the middle of the night and remembering that the toilet doesn't flush. Imagine the smell of garbage and cranny in the building. Imagine crap peeling paint impacting your children's health. But I left one small detail out. The landlord owns this one building. Landlords argue that a rent freeze would impat the small landlords, that the good guys invest their profits back in maintaining the facility. Yet, when tenants look at 1142 College Avenue, you met...
Whoa.
Hair torn.
Broke.
When our tenants met with HPD officials, HPD told the tenants that the landlord had been paying fines tens of thousands.
HPD told the tenants that the landlord had been paying fines, tens of thousands of dollars. And I just want you to really think about what you're doing, and that you have a chance to reverse the income inequality that's become rentile.
Thank you. Jennifer Clausen?
Oh, Jen. I'll be here, I mean.
Antonio Jimenez?
Antonio Jimenez.
What about the wireless?
I don't think I need it. Can everybody hear me? What do you think everybody?
Thank you so much for being here. Like everybody has said, my name is Jennifer Clausen, and I live and work in the Bronx. I know that the issue of housing affordability is something that impacts people that I care about, that I live with and work with every day. And, you know, I prepared this testimony, but I have to say, what we've heard tonight has really spoken for itself, but I do want to read what I had to say anyway. So before the voices that we heard tonight, the facts and figures we're speaking loudly and clearly to, we've heard even more than of what I have here. Our mayor has said that rent higher than thirty percent of a family's income is unaffordable, and too many people are paying more than half of their income in rent. Since the recession in 2008, the economic burden of housing has fallen unfairly onto tenants, and building owners should bear the burden. And we've heard that tonight as well. In a recent conversation about housing affordability, we were mulling over the implications that this has on stability, and again, people are talking about this tonight, and two of the ways that this is significant. If housing is affordable, then people can stay in the communities that they care about and the places that they call home, rather than being displaced because rents are too high and climbing. Flip that coin, and when rents are affordable, people can choose to live where they want. They can live where they want and not make difficult choices about what else they can afford after the rent is paid. People are working very hard and still facing limited choices, and we are seeing that here. We see that outside of here. I speak out about this because I believe in fairness, and affordable housing is an issue of fairness. We have heard a fair range of stories, but I'm now speaking from personal experience as well, as I'm facing and in a position to look for housing in a community that I want to continue to call home. And finding the numbers just like high and scary, and so I fear the choices that I'm going to have to make. So on behalf of myself, the members of my community, and the families that I work with, I'm asking you also to vote for a rent freeze. And I, I think that it is an honor that you have the power to make this decision, and so I hope that you will make your decisions.
Yes! Alana Myers and Basra Kilgore? Alana Myers? Alana Myers?
Okay, it's kind of weird. Good evening, my name is Basra Kilgore. I actually live in the morning side, southwest Harlem area, depending on where the real estate is seen in Southwood Training. In my building, whenever anybody moves out, the landlord immediately completely tears the whole apartment apart. I don't know what they claim to the DHL, they spent doing it, putting in old new appliances, completely redoing, renovating the entire apartment. And then it goes out of rent stabilization, and the sky is lit. So why there could be a rent increase for the rent stabilized people, I do not know. They, in fact, have not been bothered to collect my security deposit because they know very well, they just, they don't care what condition the apartment is in when I go, because they're going to tear it up, and they're going to take it out of rent stabilization. We have lost tens of thousands and hundreds of thousands of rent stabilized apartments since the, since the, since it became possible for landlords to take them out of rent stabilization by jacking up the rents like that. That's one thing. Another thing is, these buildings are being milked. The landlords are not making repairs because they can't afford to make them, they're not making repairs because they don't budget that money because they're milking the buildings. That is what they're doing. Where does the money go? It buys those ads, it buys the politicians upstate who vote against us when rent laws are up for renewal. It buys whatever it buys, but it doesn't buy repairs. I also work with Metropolitan Council on Housing. I am on the hotline every Monday, and I will tell you that people are terrified of their landlords. And it's not only the, you know, the individual landlord who's a nut, it's the corporate landlords. People are terrified, they're terrified of organized, they're just frightened. Every few months or so, the landlords are coming up with a new trick. They come up with new fees, they come up with new excuses, they take people, drag people into court. Then it's routine to just take all buildings full of people and say it's not your primary residence. It is absolutely obscene, and it is based on a model that it's not about providing housing, it's about just taking money out. It's as if you had a oil well or a gold mine. Why would you invest that much in it? It's for taking outs. And people buy buildings who have no more sense of how to live.
Thank you for your testimony. We do have to hear everybody else, and I do appreciate it.
I understand. You know, that is if you're going to buy a restaurant to make gazillions of dollars, and you don't even know how to chop it in the end. That's how, that's how a lot of these landlords are. And it, and the aggressiveness and the hostility and the arrogance that people are talking about is real.
It's real. Andrew K. Cologne?
Rent freeze!
Sofia S. and Andrew K. Cologne.
Hello? Yes, my name is Arigui Cologne. I was born and raised here in the Bronx. Over ten years ago, I started working and becoming active on working on housing issues and community issues, and most of them being housing issues. I've also been a member of CASA for over five years in the past, starting around 2006. And about five years ago, I started working at CASA, New Zealand Apartments. And what I wanted to say is that tenants throughout the city for years have suffered long and hard, getting unfair rent increases year after year. In 2008 and 2009, the Rent Guidelines Board also voted on giving tenants supplemental rents, which increased rents for tenants who lived in apartments more than six years and paid than one thousand dollars in rent. And in 2008, that meant that they had to pay forty dollars for one year lease and eighty dollars for two year lease. Also, I have experienced many things working at CASA, and one of the things that I've experienced is hearing the stories of tenants suffering at the hands of unscrupulous landlords. For example, many landlords take tenants to court frivolously. They send up erroneously rent receipts. So if a tenant pays five hundred dollars a month, they get rent receipts that they owe eight hundred dollars, a thousand dollars. They take them to court. Some tenants, not knowing their rights, even pay this money in court because they're afraid they're going to lose their apartments. And this is one example of some of the abuses that landlords put upon tenants. This causes not only frustration of tenants, it causes depression, it affects their mental stability, their physical stability, as well as their spiritual and emotional stability. And this is one of the reasons why there needs to be a rent freeze. Landlords for years have gotten increases after increases. When is, when is there going to be a break for the tenants? You know, landlords always say that they need an increase, but tenants are not getting increases in their, in their salaries, in their jobs. A lot of tenants don't even have jobs. They lost their jobs, especially during the time of the recession in 2008. So I applaud the board to be accountable, and be accountable to this mayor who campaigned on the rent freeze, and give us a rent freeze now.
Joanne Godell and Barbara Williamson?
Good evening, and my name is Sophia. I work with CASA. While I worked at CASA, I was pretty fortunate, having the ability to go to people's homes and visit people's apartments. And a lot of people with apartments that I visited are actually sitting in the room today, a lot of them couldn't make it. And so something that I found very strange is that a lot of times the landlords who actually own the buildings are very indifferent to the conditions of their own property, as in they don't care that there's mold, the roof is broken, there's a broken window, or the condition is unsafe, but they're completely indifferent to it. Whereas the tenants who don't actually own the buildings, they actually really care. They're the ones that are decorating the walls, they're the ones that are keeping the place clean and try to put some flowers and make the place nice. And so it seems very strange, and it's not even their property, but to them is their home, and they actually bring their life, invest their emotion in it. And so I guess the point that I want to make is, I don't want you to go home from tonight and think that maybe there's pre-selection in the type of people who come here today. Maybe these are just the extreme cases, maybe most landlords are not this bad at all. But I've spoken to a lot of people in the brief time that I've worked for CASA, and this is an epidemic issue. For every person you see here tonight, there are a hundred people who couldn't make it because they have children to pick up, or they have to work, or maybe they have disabilities and they just can't make it. And for every voice you hear here tonight, there are a hundred people who are afraid to speak because they're afraid their landlords are going to retaliate, or maybe they're afraid that they don't speak English, or that it's very intimidating to stand here and speak because we're in t-shirts and jeans, but you're in suits and you have nice jobs, and you speak with fancy words that sometimes we don't necessarily understand. But we are here tonight, and I know it's difficult to care about an issue that doesn't directly affect you, but what would our world be like without a little compassion? If Melita falls on the floor and she gets seriously injured, maybe it wouldn't affect you directly, but we're all people. And I love Melita, and I love all the people in this room, and the Bronx is speaking to you tonight, and the question is, are you listening?
Okay, okay. I don't sound too good on mic, but... So I'm Javon Pacbell, we now live in the Bronx, born and raised. And the thing that shocks me the most is the fact that we're even sitting here arguing about a rent increase, CIs, or whatever. You know, the biggest problems is that with every action, there's a reaction. You know, it's like, people can't even build on their homes, so they can't build on communities. You can't build on communities, therefore you've got poor schooling, you've got, you've got a lot of mental health issues, you've got a lot of problems that all kind of lead to one thing, and that's because people can't build on their homes. So, you know, I mean, if you don't agree with doing a rent freeze, then, you know, the biggest issue is trying to find things in a community for people to do and, you know, get involved with, because, you know, like dude over here said, when families, when mothers, single mothers or single fathers are fighting to keep their homes, then their youth are the ones that's out in the streets doing all these kind of activities, actually trying to provide for themselves and their, and their parents, when they see their parents can't do it. So, you know, to y'all or to the outside, it may seem like a high rate in crime, but that's just people trying to, you know, what they call get it how to get it, because, you know, there's no other way to do it. And it's sad, but it's true. So, you know, for the biggest things is, you know, not just for a rent freeze, but to look for, for things, other things to get involved with, you know, and come together.